Good evening. I will call the March Council Meeting to Order. All members are reported present. Thank you all for being here, and thanks to those in the audience and those joining from home. Third item on our agenda this evening is the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by a silent prayer in lieu of invocation. Invite you to please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, the individual republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Item four on our agenda this evening is the reading of the minutes of the previous meeting. It's attachments number one in your packet. We have motioned to approve by Kirkpatrick. Is there a second? Second by Furkey. Any discussion on the minutes? See none, move into vote. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed? That passes. Item five on our agenda is explanation of the visitor's speaking procedure. Members of the audience that would like to address the body may do so this evening after being recognized by a council member, in which you'll be invited to the podium to speak no longer than five minutes on an issue that is before us on our agenda this evening. Note, the mic is on tonight, and no need to turn on or turn off the microphone. Item number six is a presentation by the Regional Economic Growth Initiative, Reggie. I believe we've got two individuals, and Adam from City Staff here to present on the subject of the Regional Economic Growth Initiative, in which I also believe, unless Adam gets knocked out on his way up here, they'll take questions, I believe, as they go or at the end. So, Adam, it's all yours.
All right. Good evening, everyone. Obviously, normally, I'm not used to giving you a formal presentation, so I apologize if there's too many words or too much information here. But we're going to try and make this brief. With me tonight is John Bergen and Jeff Burton, both also members of the Reggie Board, so we're going to try and give you an update on what we've been up to over the last year or so. And then, as the mayor said at the end, we'd be happy to answer any questions as to where we are and what we're looking forward to doing in the upcoming year. So, with that, I'll invite John up, and Hugh will start, and then I'll do the middle, and then he'll finish up.
Thank you, Adam, and thank you all for allowing us to make a presentation. Thank you for your trust and financial support. And Reggie, we're committed to ensuring that your trust is rewarded and well-founded. I'm not going to read all this, but we had nineteen individuals that worked to form Reggie, if you will, from a development standpoint. And at this point in time, we are now a board of eight individuals, and I'm not going to read all those names to you. We have some really positive news, I think. We hired Nonprofit Law as a legal advisor. We completed our governance documents since the last time we presented here, and those have been vetted by the legal advisor. The Articles of Incorporation were filed, okay, and we are now officially a 501(c)(3). The IRS has also recognized us as a 501(c)(3), so you could be a 501(c)(3) and run into a problem with the IRS. And I think we can owe a thanks to Nonprofit Law. They're experts in this area. They've formed a number of these as economic development units, so they knew how to do it. We have now moved from the organizing committee to a formal board. Your funds to support Reggie were leveraged by a $50,000 WEDC grant, a capacity building grant. So, the local county and municipal and town funds were indeed leveraged. A good news thing, I think, is that WEDC wants to use us as an example. They definitely favor a regional approach to economic development, and that is indeed our model, to look at South Wood County and Northern Adams County, all within the region of Reggie. We had eight respondents to do an infrastructure study. We selected one of those that we feel was a very superior organization, and that's Loopkey and Associates. They have been working on the infrastructure study. The focus of the study was to provide a comprehensive inventory of the physical, soft skill, human resources, educational infrastructure in the Southern Wood and Northern Adams County areas. Infrastructure entity representatives were designated from each community that we studied, and the asset inventory portion of the study is complete, and the competitive benchmarking portion of the study is complete. So, they've benchmarked us versus other similar communities, and by similar, in most cases, I mean where industry has been hammered in some fashion, where there was a downsizing of industry. So, others that have gone through similar things. And Adam?
All right. So, as part of the infrastructure study that was referenced, the asset portion was completed. I'm not going to go into a great deal of depth on this, mainly because I don't want you guys to fall asleep on me, but also because we would expect that we would bring this back to you at a later date and go into more detail on it. But there were five main areas of study, so I just wanted to hit on all five of those and just kind of give you a couple of takeaways from each one. So, the first item was industrial land and buildings. So, what they did is they went through and did an inventory of all the business parks in the area, as well as any existing buildings. So, I don't know that you can read it, but as you can see, there are numerous industrial parks in the area. And one thing that it found is, obviously, there's plenty of land available for development. That is not an issue here. What is an issue is there are actually surprisingly few vacant industrial buildings, which actually hamstrings us a little bit for attracting people to this area. A lot of times, site selectors are always going to be looking for existing building stock rather than greenfield development. Next phase was downtown redevelopment. Obviously, one of the interesting things they found is really, for all intents and purposes, there's really only one downtown within the Southwood County, Northern Adams County area, and that is Wisconsin Rapids. So, the two of the findings they did have, one of those is that we are the only downtown. The other one is that we really need to look at some new and exciting housing options within the downtown area. And obviously, this council has taken the steps recently to begin to look at that. So, that's commending, even without this report, you guys are beginning to look forward and beginning to consider options for improving housing downtown. Next aspect was infrastructure. This is originally how the study kind of came to be. We were originally going to just look at infrastructure, and then we realized that was kind of looking too narrow, so we tried to broaden the approach a little bit and take in these other pieces. So, again, they're looking at all sorts of infrastructure, everything from IT to sewer and water to electrical, all aspects. But again, two main takeaways that we found, at least at this point. Number one, on a power side, we're actually very competitive to other regions, so we do have low power costs. And then, another finding is that actually, because there are so many jurisdictions in this area, and so many times, they're developing their own sewer and water facilities, it's actually leading to limitations on our infrastructure. Because instead of investing on expanding one plant, everyone's doing the same expansion, so you're not getting as much bang for your dollar. So, that was kind of an interesting takeaway. Next aspect was education. Obviously, I think most people around here are of the opinion that we have a very good K-12 education system. This study is showing that that is in fact true, so it's not just something that Civic Pride says we have something good. We're actually seeing some third-party opinions supporting that. Kind of surprising is that, in the opinion of the drafters of this document, so far, they're feeling that MST, Midstate Technical College, is actually not living up to its full potential. Obviously, not to say they don't do a lot of good work, but there's more that could be harnessed with Midstate Technical College. And then, the final aspect that they began to look at is quality of life. This is a very difficult thing, obviously, to kind of quantitate. But two of the findings that they did find is, obviously, we have extremely good safety and security in this area. There's high training and professionalism in our public safety sectors. One of the surprising, I guess, negatives is that it showed that none of the communities are really taking full advantage of their ability to attract tourism. So, there's a lot of assets here, but there's not enough emphasis being put on trying to capture those dollars. Another aspect of the study is, and something unique about the consultant that was chosen, is they actually have a national site selector as part of the project team. He has presented to the Reggie Board on occasion. I believe he's also presented to the Heart of Wisconsin Leadership Group. So, I wanted to kind of throw out some of the observations that he has made up to this point. His favorite analogy is that site selection is a lot like the game show Survivor. You have to get on the island, and then you have to stay on the island. And in order to be on the island, you're probably going to have to look at cooperating with others. A municipality such as Wisconsin Rapids probably isn't going to be able to win a lot just on its own. So, looking at regional partners, whether that's just the Southwood County area or larger, trying to capture other partners such as UW Stevens Point is going to improve our chances. He did also point out that it's important to note that attraction is only one part of the pie. Obviously, there are other parts of economic development, and he is only one small part of that. So, again, his concept of staying on the island, there are all sorts of knockout factors. His other analogy he likes is that it's actually like a funnel. So, as he starts at a very large search area, it could be a couple hundred municipalities, and what he's going to do is he's going to slowly cut out people. His job is not to keep in municipalities. His job is to get municipalities out. So, if you don't have what it takes, he's not going to make any special effort to try and keep you in just because he likes you as a municipality. So, you have to make sure that you have as much in place at the front end. So, two of the main things they're looking at are operating costs, so that's going to be your labor, utilities, real estate, freight taxes, and then your operating conditions. So, that's going to be tied into your labor, air access, utility suppliers, and universities in the area. So, just as kind of aside, one advantage this area does seem to have is labor availability. It's kind of a two-sided coin. If we don't have labor availability, that means we have high employment, but it is an opportunity to attract further companies. So, some of the things that the recent Vital Signs Report has brought to bear is that currently thirty-seven percent of our workforce actually leaves the area on a daily basis, so that's a large portion of workers that we could be trying to retain and utilize for local employers. Our local workers have dropped from forty-six percent to thirty-eight percent. Our unemployment rate, although not outrageously high compared to the state, is still higher than the state average at 6.4 percent. So, again, that's available workers is a positive spin on unemployment. And then, we unfortunately have depressed wage rates in this area. Our median income has decreased since 2000, but again, that is an attractive thing to many employers because their cost of business is therefore less. And then, obviously, a recurring theme is that our population loss is tied to young people leaving the area. So, that's another opportunity. If we get more employers here, the possibility to keep more of our young people. So, going back to kind of that funnel effect, so once you get through all of those actual cost of business and those type of factors, we actually get down to the tiebreakers, and those are first where quality of life really comes into play. A lot of people like to think that the quality of life in the Wisconsin Rapids area is going to win us every competition, but the fact of the matter is, a lot of times, they're looking at the bottom line first, and quality of life is only going to be a tiebreaker. So, it's important to remember that. And the other thing is incentives. That's kind of the magic phrase. A lot of times, people seem to think incentives are absolutely necessary. While they help, one of the comments he made is that it's not going to take a C proposal into an A proposal. So, if your community doesn't have what the business needs, an incentive is not going to make the company come here. But if it's down to you and another municipality, and they're offering incentives and you're not, that could be a possibility as to why the company goes one direction or another. So, that's just a quick overview of the study. Again, hopefully, in the future, once we get the full report, we'll bring that back before you so that you can get more detail on that. And then, I'll turn it back over to John to take you through the next steps.
Thank you, Adam. So, our next steps are to recruit and hire the Reggie president. We've already had a group that we've looked at, and unfortunately, we did not find someone that would really fit. So, we're back to the drawing board there. Also, we need to move a municipal town forum forward to create an operational entity, and this entity is designed to provide input to Reggie and vice versa, okay? Input from the towns and from Reggie to the towns. So, we have, I think, the structure in mind, and we have their goals and objectives in mind, but we need to actually make that operational. And we need a representative from each participating entity to join. And we don't have a designee from the city yet, so we would like this group to think about that as to who will be the designee. Adam sits on the board. It's probably not appropriate for him to be both a board member and the designee for the municipal forum. Strategy development. On the 23rd of this month, we will be working on strategy development, looking for methods to support existing businesses and develop our assets, entrepreneurial development, human capital development, partner development, so that we have state and regional economic development players that are working with us, and as well as private industry financial support. And one of the focuses also will be youth retention. We have this fabulous school system, but we're not capturing those youth as employees in this area. Our results, hopefully, will be a one-stop shop to assist entrepreneurs, existing businesses, et cetera. Businesses will grow in our region if we want them. I think that's another thing that we all need to think about. What is our attitude toward business development and different businesses? We need to make sure that we are welcoming. Businesses will come to our region if they can have a profitable existence, and that's a key point from this study, and you heard Adam make those points. That's what really is going to make the difference. If we're going to locate or expand here, it must be a profitable operation. Entrepreneurs will grow in our region if we encourage and support them. So, we're going to have to have a way to foster entrepreneurship and also to finance their activities. We all need to be part of building the bridges that we need to show a collective interest and enthusiasm in business development. And also, Jeff Burton is on the board, and Jeff is the treasurer of our group. And I saw Gus Bankuso, I think, walk in, and Gus was the facilitator of the group of nineteen that developed our concept to this point, okay? So, between Adam and myself and Jeff and Gus, I think we can answer your questions, and we'd love to do that.
Questions for the presenters. All the person Kirkpatrick, please.
Thank you. Thanks for the presentation tonight. I know it's kind of been a question on everybody's mind, obviously, for the past several months as to what all has been going on. So, I think this is a great status update. You mentioned that we have been benchmarked against other municipalities similar in nature to ours. Can you share as to where a municipality stands, or where, I guess, if it's classified as a region, where the region stands against those benchmarks?
Yes, we can. However, I think you'd be, it's not a simple answer. We'd love to come back to you and talk about that specifically, if you would entertain that, or in a committee. But I think to cover that tonight is too much detail, all right?
Is there kind of a gloss or an overarching that you can throw at?
It's just not that straightforward. Yes, we have, some of the points that Adam brought forward, we have some real strong assets, and that's really what we need to concentrate on and develop. You know, we can't look at the negatives. We need to look at the positives, okay? And also, the things we need to do to develop the positives. Vibrant downtown is one of those things that other areas have that we don't have, okay? So, if you look at, say, La Crosse, you look at Appleton or some of those areas, that's really a drawing that we don't have. So, those are some of the things that we don't look well at from a competitive standpoint. The education that we provide to our youth is a very strong asset. This availability of labor, you know, at one time, these people did work in this community, and now they're traveling sometimes thirty, forty miles out of the community. So, we do have the labor availability. That's an advantage that we do have, okay? So, those are some of the things that are key advantages that have come out of the benchmarking. But there's many other things, too. This infrastructure piece, in what can we offer folks in terms of power and water and sewer? The sewer area is a major hangup for many types of operations that might be viable, because another one of our strong assets is the food piece, vegetables, cranberries, potatoes, that type of thing. Dairy is another strong possibility for growth. So, how do we support those types of industries? And in some cases, we're competitive, some cases, we're not. It takes more, I can't really give you the proper perspective in a short time.
Okay. You mentioned, like, Appleton, La Crosse. Are those some of the communities that were benchmarked against?
Appleton in particular, because it was a major, paper was a major player there, and they've lost as much of the paper as we have. Kalamazoo is another area that has lost a tremendous amount of the paper industry. That was another one that they took a look at.
So, this isn't just set straight for Wisconsin. This is looking at Upper Midwest?
Yes, Upper Midwest, right, yes.
Thank you.
I'll make a comment, and Andrew addressed the first one, on the benchmarking component. And I think that was something we had stressed very early on, was how do we stack up? How do we compare ourselves? And then, even further, before we even get to that point, what do we compare, how do we rank ourselves? What is the criteria we compare ourselves upon? So, I think, you know, as he alluded to, coming back to this body, to share the findings of that, I think is going to be helpful for all of you to speak, you know, sort of some depth about the rankings. And I think, you know, when we first approached, as a member of the original group that had assembled regarding Reggie, you know, we had talked a lot about competitiveness, you know? What is the element that we're lacking in the area of competitiveness, and then where are the areas where we're really, really strong? And making sure that we're playing to those strengths, or refining some of the weaknesses where it's appropriate. So, I think you covered the points pretty well in that regard. All the person Furkey, please.
Hi, John.
Hi.
So, with Reggie, is it more based on manufacturing-type development, or is there tourism involved? Is there service industry involved?
If you look at, then, one of our competitive strengths, if you will, is that we have people that have worked in manufacturing and know what manufacturing is, okay? That is a strength. So, if we can grow the manufacturing that's here, that's a very positive thing for us. It's probably not going to be paper. The reality is, it's not going to be paper. But it can be dairy. It can be cranberries. It can be potatoes and vegetables, those types of things, okay? So, agricultural and manufacturing, as it relates to agricultural, makes a lot of sense for this area.
So, the focus will be more towards the manufacturing or agriculture rather than the tourism?
Well, that, okay. Now, when you start bringing in Northern Wood with the Sand Valley and the shooting range and so on, then it makes a lot of sense for that area to be a recreational focus, okay? And hopefully, we'll all benefit from that recreational focus there. And it would be nice if this downtown were the destination for those folks after they've played thirty-six holes of golf.
Sure. Another couple things. You talked about looking for representatives from each community. Were they, are you looking for strictly public official representation, or are you looking for business, people with business backgrounds?
Public official. Someone who is tuned in to what's happening in the city.
Okay. Thank you.
In your speaking, though, a question was, I think, to the municipal group, but the Board of Directors has that, it was in formative stages, I guess, the last I knew. Are there still spots open that you're looking for certain expertise to fill?
Yes. We have a group of eight, and our bylaws allow a group of thirteen, up to thirteen. So, yes, we're looking for some folks in perhaps finance and real estate and so on to join the board as time goes on here.
Excellent. Thank you.
But the municipal forum, that piece, we really want someone who's knowledgeable about city affairs, municipal affairs, village affairs.
All the person stack, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. In regards to, you spent, your article, your presentation included a underutilization of bid state in, I think I said manufacturing.
Right.
Is that correct? Okay. How does it meet on a technical level? What I'm thinking about is I've had a person approach me about, is there a way to bring a technical business into the a technical business into the community and team it with midstate? How is midstate for technical purposes? For example, across the street, you have Renaissance from midstate. And they, they're software, but certainly there are people there who are, need technical skills to provide the answers that a school might call in, as well as, of course, the items related to their product. Is there a way, or was technical schooling, technical business considered as a part of this initial discussion?
Yes, it was. IT, healthcare.
Right.
We, we are not ignoring these other areas, but the primary focus has been manufacturing. You know, I think we talked about that in our first presentation here, why manufacturing? And that's because it has greater leverage, if you will. It has a leverage factor of like 1.4. So if you sell something you make, it has the greatest leverage. Whereas if you look at healthcare, it's like a one-to-one dollar of income is only leveraged one time. So it's basically an exchange. So as you look at manufacturing, it's one of the stronger areas to focus on for growth and building viability in a community. Now Renaissance nonetheless is a very strong element in this community and certainly something we want to develop. And the issue that they, you know, they need a lot of IT people. And one of the things that we have as a challenge in this community is a pipeline of techni, technically-trained people, okay? So IT, industrial mechanical technicians, industrial electrical technicians, all of those things. Midstate is doing an excellent job in the industrial electrical area. There can be improvement in industrial mechanical and in IT from, from my perspective now. They may not agree with me totally.
Sure.
But, but it's not necessarily their fault. Part of the problem is the youth are not necessarily seeking those careers. So we really have to build a pipeline. And I think you've, you've heard some of the other work that's going on at Encourage, and Gus is intimately involved in that in terms of a business and education committee with all of the schools in the area. We need to convince our youth that training in these areas is important and will provide them with a family-sustaining job in the future. These are high-paying jobs compared to many that we have in this area, so.
All right. Thank you.
Long story.
No problem. Thank you.
Other questions? Alderperson Kirkpatrick, please.
Thank you, once again. Just kind of as we were, you're going around here, I'd, I'd be all for having, you know, another presentation or a committee of the whole meeting or whatever the case may be with for it, but that's, it's not my decision. But I think, maybe on everybody's thought here, you talked about going out and getting a president, and, you know, you got a couple of next steps. And I think you've probably hit on some of the things that we need to do as a municipality, as a governing council, things of that nature. But I guess, what is it that you are envisioning coming here before us tonight? Are you looking for another level of cooperation? I mean, obviously, a continuing cooperation, but is there some other level of commitment that you're looking at here tonight or in the next few months that we should be kind of putting on our radar?
Well, we'll probably be coming with a request for additional support, yes. We felt it was appropriate to bring you up to date on what we've done and where we are so far. We, once we get through our strategy development piece, then I think that's probably another good time to come back and tell you where we are and talk about our competitive stance and our strategy going forward.
Okay. Do you have any kind of idea what that timeline is like right now, or is that kind of too far out there yet?
We're hoping to wrap up by the end of May.
Okay.
And, and absolutely by June thirtieth.
So you're wanting to be somewhere in early to midsummer. You want to be back before the council looking for?
Right.
Okay. Thank you.
I think that timeline is appropriate for some of the other pieces that we've got within Adam's department and some other areas. So I think that would be a time, not only just on this subject, but on other subjects that's, that are connected. Okay. I don't see any further requests for questions, so thank you, gentlemen, for being here.
And thank you very much.
You bet. We'll see you soon. Okay, next item on our agenda this evening, item seven, is my report. Good evening, Alderperson, city staff, and residents here or watching from home. As with previous month's reports, I will highlight some of the many items that cross my desk or I partake in following the last council meeting. Late last month, I was honored to provide a keynote presentation on lean government to those in attendance at the Wisconsin Land Information Association's annual conference. The conference's focus was on many ways technology can be utilized to improve processes. The presentation that I gave was built on this theme by emphasizing the importance of government policies and programs that apply solutions like open data and GIS in their ongoing operations. It was a great experience presenting on our successes here and the challenges with the city's rapid improvement initiative. With thirteen projects and many JDI's or just do-its underway in the city, much is going on, working towards improving our processes and identifying areas to redirect time or money saved. Relating to this, eight of our project teams will soon be working on project closeout documents, highlighting their projects and identifying strategies in place to carry out improvements or to maintain the game. Those reports will be provided to each of you upon completion, with an option to follow-up on reports with a progress update from the project teams at a committee of the whole or a special council meeting. Last week, I accompanied our Water Works and Lighting Commissioner, Commission's General Manager, Jim Brown, to attend the American Public Power Association's 2015 Legislative Rally. The Legislative Rally, I would say, was a great opportunity for us to join with our fellow municipal utilities and officials to make a concerted effort in speaking with our congressional delegation about the impact, direct impact of federal action on our municipal utilities. Topics discussed include the importance of tax-exempt financing to municipal governments, which obviously impacts our ability to bond for road construction, other things, but not only that, but those that our municipal utilities also undertakes. Our direct interaction, I would say, also is critical as it demonstrates the importance in protecting the interests of our local utilities and, in the end, our customers or the ratepayers. Other items worth noting include the fact that we held the kickoff for the Mayor's Council on Sustainability, in which we had an excellent showing of residents. We had Alderperson Hep, I believe, there, some city staff as well. Our next meeting will be on Thursday, March twenty-sixth at 5:00 PM at McMillan Library. Earlier this year, I assumed the presidency of the Central Wisconsin Economic Development Fund, which is the revolving loan fund that we are a part of that was regionalized some years ago, in which our most recent project that we can see here in our city was K&amp;W Glass, now the former auto-electric building that is undergoing a nice redevelopment. That was a direct result of our participation with a revolving loan fund to that project. Also, since the creation of the Public Works Director position, it's been posted, and HR has been receiving a number of applicants. I have and will continue to work with Streets Engineering and Wastewater Departments to develop what we call a character assessment to be used when we begin screening those applicants. This is a critical hire on many levels and requires active participation from many departments and their leadership. So more information will be forthcoming on that. Also, since our last council meeting, I, as well as some city staff and council members here, attended the Heart of Wisconsin Chamber Annual Dinner and Awards Event. So I wanted to mention congratulations to the following award recipients. The Hotel Mead and Conference Center was Business of the Year. The Town of Rome was Innovative Business of the Year. Tom Socks, many of you might know him, he's Citizen of the Year. Andy Nelson, many of us know him, he was Developer of the Year. The Trading Post, just down the street, were recognized for their, their Entrepreneurs of the Year. McMillan Memorial Library was Shining Star of the Year. Jeff Stoner, who's an ambassador, was identified as Ambassador of the Year. And the Wisconsin Rapids Raptors were awarded the Community Spirit Award. Also, the waterfront design request for proposals and the preliminary stages of the DNR stewardship grant are progressing, some of which are on our agenda tonight. Also worth mentioning, the city's hail damage RFP is now also published for contractors or subcontractors in the community to be aware of the large amount of work that we need to do on our city buildings as a result of the hailstorm last summer. Since last month's council meeting, I also issued one proclamation, which was National Service, National and Community Service Day. This April seventh, the City of Wisconsin Rapids joined seventeen hundred municipalities to spotlight the impact of citizen involvement on the third annual Mayor's Day of Recognition for National Service. Tomorrow, I'll also be on WFHR with Carl Hillkey for my monthly visit, so I encourage you to tune in from ten to eleven. And as always, I hope you find value in a sampling of what my weeks consist of. I encourage residents, including yourselves, to subscribe to my community update online or if you're not online, catch variations recorded on RCCA Media or request a print version of that document from my office. As always, I welcome phone calls, visits, or, or emails on any particular subject that people feel is important to them. Item number eight on our agenda is the report of the Planning Commission meeting held March second. The Planning Commission met at 5:00 PM in the Third Forest Conference Room here at City Hall on March second. All members were present except Joe Ikestead, also attending were Alderperson Tom Rayoma and Adam Tegan. A list of others is present, present is on file in the Clerk's Office. There was a motion and a second to approve the report from the January twelfth. That motion carried. There were no other maps or plots received. Item three on that agenda was a public hearing on Plan 150097. Jerry Geisert, the application, applicant is requesting a rezoning from B5, General Mixed Use District to R2, One Family and Two Family Residential District. The subject property is located at seventeen twenty-one Thirty-second Street North. We opened the public hearing. One resident questioned the ownership. Speaking in favor was Gerald Geisert from ten forty-eighth Street South. No one spoke in opposition, and we closed the public hearing. Followed by the public hearing was the action on Plan 150097. There was a motion and a second to approve the plan, and that motion carried. Item five on that report was the public hearing on Plan 150108, City of Wisconsin Rapids, in which we were requesting an amendment to Chapter twenty-six, I'm sorry, forty-six, which is our sign regulations of the municipal code. We opened the public hearing. Speaking in favor of the request was Adam Tegan from the city, and no one spoke in opposition, so we closed the public hearing. Item six was action on that plan, 150108. There was a motion and a second to approve the plan as presented by staff with the inclusion of reducing the freestanding sign height, requiring engineering approval from twenty feet down to twelve feet, and that motion carried. Item seven was just a discussion on the update of the City of Wisconsin Rapids Outdoor Recreation Plan. The Commission discussed the changes being recommended by staff to the plan. The Commission felt that some additional language regarding the recent updates to Witter Field and the ongoing city pool discussions would be appropriate inclusions. The Park and Rec Commission was to discuss and did discuss at their last meeting. There was a motion and a second to adjourn, and that committee adjourned. The second report that evening was from March, from, of the Planning Commission, I'm sorry, not that evening, was March sixteenth. The Planning Commission met at 4:00 PM on March sixteenth here in the First Forest Conference Room. All members were present except Alderperson Furkey. Also present were Adam Tegan and City Attorney Schill. A list of others is present on file in the Clerk's Office. Item one was a designated city farmer's market, in which Carrie Engelbreit was the requister. The applicant is requesting approval for the establishment of a designated city farmer's market at two zero three one Peach Street. It's noted that the market's mission is to provide local food from farmers with minimal processing. It's expected to be open Tuesdays from nine AM to six PM from mid-June through September. There was a motion and a second to approve the request, and that motion carried. The committee adjourned at four ten, and those are the reports of the Planning Commission meetings from March second and March sixteenth. With that, I entertain a motion on the two reports. I entertain a motion, I guess.
Motion to approve?
Alderperson Kirkpatrick motion to approve. Is there a second? Alderperson Dolan, move into discussion. We've got some individuals, I see, that were at, at those meetings here. Alderperson Kirkpatrick, you're first, please.
Thank you. Just a comment. Reading through the, the Rapids Outdoor Recreation Plan, again, kind of re-highlighted one big thing for me was that we're, what, three years into this thing? And when it was put together three and four years ago, residents really felt necessary and strongly that we'd be doing something for an aquatics facility. So I just, again, can hope that that conversation continues, we can make positive headway, because if that thing's been sitting out here in this plan that we're revising now for three years, and we've been discussing it the entire time I've been on the council, and I know it's been discussed for years and years and years before I got here, you know, we're probably ten, fifteen years into this discussion with still little to show for it. So I hope that we can actually pull the trigger here at some point in time in the very, very near future.
And thanks for that comment. Item nine A, there is the formal resolution amending that plan, and we'll get to that item, but there is a, a note in there on that subject that you just raised, so thanks for bringing that up. Alderperson Stack, you're next.
Thank you, Your Honor. The farmer's market, twenty thirty-one Peach Street. I can picture twentieth, and I can picture Peach. Where is twenty thirty-one? Because Peach ends at twenty.
The northeast corner of the Aspiras parking lot, the doctor's clinic.
Okay, so it will be located there?
Right. Very small amount of vendors, I think, no more than eight, Adam. Am I not mistaken on that? No more than eight.
Okay, and they reached the agreement they needed with Aspiras for this?
Yeah, in fact, they were a partner in the project, as we understand. And I don't know, is there anybody here wishing to speak on that? Yes, ma'am, if you'd like to come forward.
My name is Carrie Engelbreit, and I actually steered this project, so I can answer any questions specific to the project that you might have. In terms of the location chosen, we, Mr. Ruink is correct, we had Aspiras at the table from the beginning of this project. We actually began project planning back in October of last year. I'm not sure how much detail you want me to go into, but we, we started down this venture because there are two areas of Wisconsin Rapids that are identified by the USDA as food deserts. So we basically assembled a project team to address the health concerns of the community, and this was the intervention that we had proposed to move forward. We have a lot of community support. In the project team, we had myself from Midstate Technical College, UW Extension, the United Way, the Housing Authority, the Wood County Health Department, Environmental Health, WIC, residents of the community, and local vendors as well.
There's something like this, I guess this would be to Adam, this question. Was any, let's see, land use, anything like that needed to be changed or anything like that? And the reason I bring it up is, this is the first I saw this, and a little bit surprised by it, and I know that we have the farmer's market in the mall across the street during the summer.
Yeah. The way our ordinance reads is, we have two possible ways of regulating a farmer's market or a vendor. One is through our temporary use structure ordinance, which would require a yearly permit, which they would have to pay a weekly fee on. That is what is utilized for a lot of the vendors you see on Eighth Street that pop up for a couple of weeks and then go away, because they're not really a long-term type of deal. The other way is to treat it as a farmer's market, which is specifically referenced in the ordinance, but it does require, it's pretty vague, but the ordinance basically states farmer's markets are exempt from the temporary use and structure section if they are a city-designated farmer's market. So there is no formal process to do it. It just needs some sort of city recognition, which is the process we're bringing it through.
All right, thank you.
Further questions from Miss Engelbreit? Alderperson Kirkpatrick, please.
Just one thing that kind of caught my ear, which I, I guess I find kind of surprising. I mean, I, I'm not going to act like I know everything there is to know about food deserts, but she, that phrase kind of caught me. I mean, I, I'm familiar with the concept in like Detroit.
Right.
But, I mean, to think of it in a town that's, you know, eighteen thousand people. I mean, can you kind of say what a food desert is and the impact, and then what the identified areas are?
Absolutely. And it is strange, you know? I'm sure a lot of you had that same question, and especially with our strong agricultural ties that the speaker in front of me noted. So basically, the USDA designates food deserts under two qualifying criteria. So basically, the USDA designates food deserts under two qualifying criteria, and that would be low access and low income. So we have a certain percentage of our population that is below that income threshold, and low access to large supermarkets. So what you're envisioning a food desert in a large urban area would be, there are no very large supermarkets, and therefore, individuals have to shop at the local corner bodega, where obviously the prices are much inflated, and we have a smaller selection. In rural environments, it, we have other barriers added to low access and low income, including transportation. We don't have a public transit system, and for those in rural areas, even simply the gas money to go into a large supermarket can sometimes be a barrier. So there are two swathes. The first one is on the west side of Wisconsin Rapids, and it kind of starts at the river here, and spans out towards the Port Edwards area. And then we have a second swath on the east side of town, and that, it starts at about Baker Street, and goes up towards, like, the Beeren area, following the river.
That's interesting, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Any further questions? Alderperson Rauman, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. I guess, just a question that's been in my mind, and Andrew's question, your comment, I guess leads to a task at, is this farmer's market, who is this for?
This is for our community. We, we basically just, I assembled this project team because it was an identified health concern in our community, and, and we all came together just through altruistic ambition to support the health of the community by increasing access to fresh and affordable produce, basically.
Okay, and that answers my question. I would think maybe people at home might have the same thing, because your answer of, you know, different areas of the city that you stated, people may think that that is just for people in those areas.
Absolutely not, no.
People at a certain income level or something, people may be thinking.
Correct. And I know there was mention that, yes, we already do have a west-side market, and that's absolutely wonderful, and we in no way want to compete with that. We want to supplement that by increasing access. So the hours to this market would be on Tuesdays from 9:00 to 6:00 PM, hoping to grab some of those individuals that are, as we noted in the vital signs, 37% of our community is either coming out or coming back in during those employment times for work. And, and the Aspiras location is a perfect location to grab those individuals that are commuting in and out of our area. So this, this market is to only complement what we already have, and again, to increase access to fresh and affordable produce. This market will only allow local vendors with local foods that are minimally processed.
Alderperson Kirkpatrick, please.
Sorry, one more, and I'll try and stop.
That's okay, I like questions.
Well, you said you had Aspiras onboard as a partner from the beginning, so I mean, obviously, there, it sounds like they're donating the space and use of their parking lot for this. Are they going to be doing anything else with it, as in, I guess, the thing that I would think of first and foremost would be, like, food education programs about, you know, healthy preparation, things of that nature? Are they going to be taking an active role in that, or is that, is it just the use of the space for right now?
For right now, it's just the, the use of the actual space, so in that far back corner, so we'll have, you know, good people traveling on that highway, will have high visibility for us. What we would love to see in the future is a change of healthcare. There's a lot of evidence in the literature right now that demonstrates effectiveness of housing farmer's markets in actual healthcare facilities, so that we can change the way people think about preventative care, so that physicians and nurse practitioners and nurses can educate the clients that are accessing healthcare, those that are, that are most at risk of chronic illness, to go out and, and access the market, and to purchase the produce, and increase their intake of fresh fruits and vegetables. So at this point, it is just the actual physical location, but they are a great community partner, and I see that in the future, perhaps expanding that education. Now, those at the project team table and have transitioned into the advisory committee that will sustain this project, we do have great partners at the table, that that is their expertise. We have UW Extension at the table that wants to increase their preserving classes and, and healthy food preparation classes, so we can definitely have complementary services with those that are serving in the advisory capacity.
Thank you very much.
I think a statement that stuck with me at Planning Commission, some doctors are prescribing fruits and vegetables. I mean.
Yeah, I mean, that, that would be the.
Still sticks with me from last night.
That's what we would love.
Looking around the room, I think we all self-prescribe, but, you know, maybe not. I guess that's an option, so. Okay, any other requests to speak, or any questions for Carrie?
All right, thank you, Carrie. I will note on another item on the agenda, on the, yeah, on March 6th agenda, item six was Plan 150108. I'll ask Adam on that. It was technically amendments to the ordinance, correct? And the ordinance is not attached in their packets?
Yes, it was an amendment to the signed ordinance, Chapter 46.
Okay, so it's likely we'll have to bring that piece back, so you can approve the action, but you're not really knowing what you're approving. There were minor edits, but, I mean, I think it's important that we codify them in the.
Yeah, we can formalize that and bring it back next month.
In the ordinance. Okay, we'll bring that back next month. Okay, we've got a motion to approve the two reports. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please cast your ballots on your remote.
Motion carried, eight As and zero Nays.
Okay. Thank you all for being here on that item, those, those reports on that item. Item 9A, consider adoption of a resolution amending the City of Wisconsin Rapids Outdoor Recreation Plan, 2012 to 2016. Amendments pertain to the East Riverbank Trail and minor updates, see attachments two and three. Note, clerk's note in here, the Park and Rec Commission recommended approval of this resolution at its meeting on March 12th, 2015. So item A are the edits to the plan, and then the within resolution, which is the last, last page. I entertain a motion on that item.
Motion to approve?
The motion to approve by Kirkpatrick. Is there a second? Second by HEP. Move into discussion. Any discussion on item A? Alderperson Rauman, you're first, please.
May I talk about anything in the?
Absolutely, yeah. I think, you know, any, any amendments are still open at this point.
Okay. And I don't really have anything against it, I just wanted to bring up, as I read this and reread it, and compared to what Planning had and whatever, it just seems like, maybe I read it wrong, that parks are mentioned repetitively, and I understand, as you read it, they're different, it says something different about it, but, and then where it has complete, it seems like, can some of that be taken out that has been done already? Or is there a reason to leave that there, that we couldn't put it in a different spot that we know it's been done? It just seems like, to me, anyway, as I read that, and I look back at it again, and I approve what's there, but I just, that's what I raised the question for.
Good point. Adam?
Well, I guess there was two different thoughts of doing it. The reason it was left in there is we saw this as more of an update to the Park and Rec Plan, so we're not looking at really a whole new adoption of a brand-new plan, which is when I would normally pull out that type of information of what exact, what has been completed, since it's still the Park and Rec Plan of 2010 to 20, I forget what the end date on it is. But, so that's why that thought process went forward. I agree, it's a little repetitive, but hopefully, in the next few years, we'll be able to go back and actually do a complete rewrite, and go back out, make sure how the community is still feeling the same way, and clean it up a bit more.
I agree with your point, though, it's a bit scattered as it relates to what's been done, and, any further discussion? Seeing none, we have a motion to approve. Please cast your ballots.
Motion carried, eight As and zero Nays.
Thank you. Item 9B, consider adoption of a resolution for the city to apply for a grant for outdoor recreation aids, see attachment number four. I entertain a motion on that item.
Motion to approve, and if after, you would be so good as to explain what you and I were discussing a few months ago.
Sure. Alderperson Kirkpatrick, motion to approve. Is there a second?
Alderperson Dolan, second. There was a request to elaborate on the question that Andrew had raised previous, and I think it was addressed actually in the last item, which was the recognition that the Aquatics Center, or public access to an aquatics facility was recognized in the update that we just approved, which was on page 26. So previously, it had some language that didn't quite apply. I'm not exactly remembering what it was, but that is new language that was added in, under item A on page 26. So the question, I think, was, if we're going to adopt this plan for the next year and a half, which is really kind of the timing of this plan, is it safe to say that we're still going to focus on it? Yes. And I think it's nice to have it reiterated in this, this edit, in this adoption of it.
Very good, thank you.
Further questions, or discussion on item 9B? Joe, did you have any comments as it relates to the process going forward, as it relates to this?
With the, with the resolution, it's primarily a formality to make the application with, for the grant. After this, we'll be pulling all the other information together, the, with the outdoor rec plan, with approval tonight. That also needs to be submitted to the DNR for their approval, that they can have on file and on record.
And will we be back in April with the formal stewardship grant for application by May 1st? Is that a step that will require council approval?
We can try to bring it back in time. I'm not sure.
We may have a draft ready for folks to review?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, that just addressed my, my question. Okay. All right, seeing no further requests to speak, please cast your ballots.
Motion carried, eight As and zero Nays.
Item 10, Standing Council Committee Reports, item A, Finance and Property Committee meeting held March 3rd. Alderperson Stack.
Thank you, Your Honor. The Finance and Property Committee met at 5:00 PM on Tuesday, March 3rd, in the 1st floor conference room at City Hall. We had Andrew Kirkpatrick sitting in for Alderperson Dolan, and Todd Furkey sitting in for Alderperson World. Also attending were Tim DeSorcy, Mayor Ruink, Adam Teagan, Jim Borsky, Sue Schill, and Tom Rauman. Meeting was called to order. Item 2, a request from Sarah Arnt of Wood County Task Force on Child Abuse for approval of a special event application for Run the Rapids on April 11th from 8:00 AM to 12:00 PM, to include street closure of, A, First Avenue South from West Grand Avenue to 3rd Avenue South, and B, Goggins Street between 1st Avenue South and 3rd Avenue South. It was moved by Kirkpatrick, seconded by Stack to approve the special events application, including the street closures. Motion carried. Item 3, a request from Adam Teagan, Planning and Economic Development Director, to consider discontinuing membership with the North Central Wisconsin Regional Planning Commission. No action was taken, and it was requested to be placed on the April 7th committee meeting. Item 4, consider approval of improvements to Witter Field to be done by the Wisconsin Rapids rafters in 2015. It's noted that any improvements exceeding $10,000 need to be approved by the Finance and Property Committee, per the city's lease agreement with the rafters. It was moved by Stack, seconded by Kirkpatrick, to approve the plan as presented. Motion carried. Item 5, a carryover of unexpended 2014 appropriation resolution. It was moved by Stack, seconded by Kirkpatrick, to approve the following carryover of unexpended 2014 appropriation resolution, number, motion carried. Item 6 was a 2014 year-end transfer resolution. It was moved by Stack, seconded by Kirkpatrick, to approve the following 2014 year-end transfer resolution. Motion carried. Item 7, beverage operator license applications. It was moved by Kirkpatrick, seconded by Furkey, to approve new licenses for the following applicants. Motion carried. Item 7B, it was moved by Kirkpatrick, seconded by Furkey, to renew a beverage operator license for Lisa Clemente. Motion carried. Item 7C, there were no beverage licenses that were denied by the police department. Item 8 was audit of the bills. It was moved by Kirkpatrick, seconded by Stack, to pay the bills, voucher 58446 to 58817. Motion carried. It was moved by, it was moved and seconded to adjourn. Motion carried. Meeting adjourned at 6:01 PM. Your Honor, I move for adoption of these minutes of March 3rd.
We have a motion to approve the report of the Finance and Property Committee meeting March 3rd by Alderperson Stack, seconded by Alderperson Kirkpatrick. Move into discussion. Kirkpatrick, you're first.
Thank you. Just real quick regarding item, lost it, hang on. Four, there we go. The improvements to Witter Field. I got an email here through the day from our attorney, Sue Schill, that it sounds like we've got some agreement that may have been reached. There was points within the plan that was presented that would be responsibility of the city to take care of, as far as repairs go, and I believe Jim Borsky was, you were addressing those, that was correct? And then through, I would assume, your office or Sue's office was working together to find out with the rafters, what percentages or payments, or whatever it would be. So I don't know, Sue, if you want to kind of grab the reins of that one?
Well, right, there is a few of the, the minor items that would be considered repair and maintenance that, that we, as the landlord, should take care of. Some of the fencing, some of the outfield wall, down the first baseline, that fencing is in pretty bad shape and kind of dangerous. So those items, it was pretty much agreed that those were just Witter Field outlay items, just like any other park that would need some repair, that those would, we would take care of those. And then as far as the grandstand netting goes, it's probably close to the end of its useful life, and that is something that we would be responsible for. But we would, we would only need to probably pay for about $2,000 of that, and then the rafters would cover the rest of it, just kind of as part of the, the repair of that, or the, basically the replacement of that netting. And that would be all under the, Witter Field Outlays, is my understanding, is that correct? Jim?
I'm going to defer to Tim on what opponent's going to come out of, but, yeah, a lot of the work was just, will be the result of just wear and tear.
Okay, and then, being as it's recognized wear and tear to essentially what city property, is that going to have to come back to finance in order to have that approval? I, I'm thinking the answer, I'm seeing a shaking of heads, no, but just want to be sure.
No. It would, yeah, it would, it would go to Park and Rec if there's anything from Park Outlay, because it wasn't identified in the budget, it's likely going to go back to Park and Rec, which would have final authority on it.
Okay, thank you. Just wanted to verify the process here.
Thank you. Any further requests to speak? Seeing none, please cast your ballots on that report.
Motion carried, eight As and zero Nays.
Item B, Public Works Committee meeting held March 3rd. Alderperson Rauman.
Thank you, Your Honor. Public Works Committee met at 6:00 PM on March 3rd, 2015, in the 1st floor conference room in City Hall. All members were present. Also attending were Alderperson Todd Furkey and Joe Aikstedt. Item 1 was to call the meeting to order. Item 2 was a request, request of permission to modify the pavement markings and signage at the intersections of East Grand Avenue and 3rd Street South, and East Grand Avenue and. and Second Street South, to reduce the number of vehicle lanes entering the intersections. There was a motion, a second, to approve modifying the pavement markings and signage on East Grand Avenue between Second Street and Third Street, as well as on Third Street at East Grand Avenue. That motion carried. Item three, review and discuss the city's existing streetlight policy. The existing policy was reviewed and proposed language for the street lighting policy was discussed. Item four, review and approve the DOT Project 6999-07-19, negotiated three-party design contract for the East Grand Avenue, Third Street to Eighth Street project. The contract may be either amended or redone in order to accommodate the change from Third Street, Eighth Street to, Grand Avenue Bridge, and Eighth Street as determined by the DOT. There was motion, a second, to approve the contract as presented. Item five, the 2015 project schedule was reviewed. Item six, the referral list was reviewed. Items of 2014, number thirteen, and from 2015, items five, seven, and eight can be removed. Item seven, there was a motion, a second, to adjourn, the motion carried, the meeting adjourned at seven twenty-seven P.M. And with that, Your Honor, move for adoption of the report.
We have a motion to approve by Rayom, seconded by Kirkpatrick, move into discussion on that report. Seeing no requests to speak, move into vote, please cast your ballots.
Motion carried, eight A's and zero N's.
Item C under item ten, the Human Resources Committee meeting held March third, Alderperson Worrell, please.
Thank you, Mayor, fellow councilmen. Item one, roll call, called to order. The Human Resources Committee met at four P.M. on Tuesday, March third, 2015, in the third floor conference room at City Hall. All committee members were present, all others present are on file in the clerk's office. Item two, Police Chief Hoyer discussed a plan for physical assessment testing for police officers as required by the labor agreement. Chief Hoyer and Deputy Chief Randy Johns discussed their plan for physical testing for police officers. Target date of May was set for a trial run. Item three, discussed revisions to the overtime policy for street department employees. The proposed revisions to the overtime policy for street department employees were discussed. There was a motion and a second to approve the revised overtime policy, motion carried. See attachment for complete policy. Item four, the committee voted to go into closed session, there was a motion and a second to go into closed session. A roll call vote was taken, with all voting in the affirmative, motion carried. In closed session, as noted above, the committee discussed collective bargaining negoti, negotiations for police and fire groups. The committee returned into open session, there was a motion and a second to return into open session. The committee discussed the approval of a tentative agreement, no action was taken at this time. Item five, there was a motion, a second, to adjourn, motion passed, meeting adjourned at five fifty-two P.M. With that, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes, place them on file.
We have a motion to approve by Worrell, is there a second? Seconded by Furkey, move into discussion. Are there any requests to speak on the report? Seeing none, please cast your ballots.
Motion carried, eight A's and zero N's.
Item eleven, under miscellaneous reports, item A, the City Treasurer's monthly report for January and February. Item B, the Resident Advisory Board of the Wisconsin Rapids Housing Authority, held February seventeenth. Item C, McMillan Memorial Library Board of Trustees, held January twenty-first. Item D, the report of the Wisconsin Rapids Police Department Report, Department for February. Item E, the Police and Fire Commission, held February eleventh. Item F, the Wisconsin Rapids Fire Department Organizational Summary for February. Item H, the Waterworks and Lighting Commission, held February eleventh, their Personnel Committee, February eleventh, their regular meeting, and March fifth, their special meeting. Item I, the Wisconsin Rapids Housing Authority, held January twenty-nine. Item J, the Treasurer's Report on Investments for January. And item K, the McMillan Library 2014 Annual Report. I would indicate that normally Park and Rec would come under this report, and it'll likely come at next month's for being placed on file. It was a, it was really a good meeting. Alderperson Kellogg, you're first, please.
I'm always impressed with McMillan Library, and if you look at their report, under the Director's Report, the second paragraph, they have a flipster initiative in which they have like thirty magazines on file that the visitors or people at home can obtain copies on their laptops or with their cards and, from the library. So they may want to keep that in mind, you can get the Consumer Report, car repair manuals, magazines, Encyclopedia Britannica, and other magazines right at home. So it's something to keep in mind, hence free.
Any other requests to speak? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion on those reports. Is there a motion? Alderperson Furkey.
And make motion to accept and place on file, please.
Motion to approve by Furkey and place on file, seconded by Kellogg. Alderperson Furkey, you're next to speak. Did you want to speak? He didn't want to speak? No problem. Please cast your ballots on the motion.
Motion carried, eight A's and zero N's.
Item twelve, items for new business at the April twenty-first council meeting. It will be the, my report, or, I'm sorry, my appointments to various commissions, committees, there's a number of appointments that are coming due or have expired for terms of individuals serving on boards and commissions, so if you hear of anyone in the community that's interested in serving on a board or a commission or a committee, be glad to entertain their suggestion for an appointment. Mayor's Youth Council, I understand, is coming forth with a, in some legislation to get approved, I'm not sure if there's any comments on that. Item thirteen is referral of communication to committees. Are there any referrals to committees? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion, oh, Alderperson Kirkpatrick, please.
Thank you. This is one, I had kind of spoken with Tom about this at our Public Works Committee. I had an individual who sits on the wastewater commission, wanted, wanted the council to take up consideration of if that commission was still valid, necessary, needed. If it is, yea, if it's not, what do we do? And so, I don't necessarily know that that would be something that we would, I had thought maybe it would go to Public Works, because then all issues related to wastewater would then end up at Public Works, but I don't know if that's a discussion that maybe we would rather have at a committee of the whole meeting. So I guess I'm kind of looking for consideration and thought from fellow council members as to your opinions, ideas, that nature.
Okay, so the fate of wastewater commission, maybe, could be a referral to public, or to a committee of the whole, if there's a, if there's one going, going to be scheduled, or maybe on a future council agenda if we don't have one in the meantime?
We can get an email out, the only thing I appreciate is if you would respond in a timely manner. It's easier for Shane and, and I to, you know, put dates together instead of waiting a week or two to have all eight of you to respond, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other referrals of communication to committees? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion by Rayom, seconded by Kirkpatrick, all in favor. Oppose and adjourn. Thank you all for being here and for your attention from home.